Welcome you to the Springfield Planning Commission Meeting on Thursday, March 6, 2025. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.2, please call the room.
Baggett.
Here.
Bibb.
Here.
Floyd.
Briggs.
Here.
Greg.
Here.
Moreland.
Here.
Shot.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Townsend.
Yeah.
We have eight present, here is a quorum.
Item 1.3, approval of minutes from the regular meeting of the Planning Commission held on February 6, 2025. We have a motion.
General Counsel, approve or disapprove.
Okay. You have a motion to approve. Ready for a vote?
Take it.
Item 1.4 is the public comment period. At this time, I will call you to the microphone. You will have two minutes to speak from when you get to the microphone. David Fowth, Northborne Street, Springfield. Is Mr. Fowth here? Number two, Jarvis Turnley, Westgate Drive, Springfield, Tennessee. Number three, Gina Head Hiver, Highway 49 West, Springfield.
Good evening. My husband's going to hand out some pictures to y'all while I speak. The first four pictures is from Jim Gower Road. The second, three pictures is from our farm, and the third, two pictures is from Highway 49 West, and the smaller pictures is from Jim Gower Road between 2011 and 2013. My bullet points are, there's the inadequate sewer system currently. The schools will need to be upgraded. Traffic and safety concerns. The stormwater, as you can see in those pictures, and E-911 dispatchers. The sewer system is not adequate currently for the amount of houses, businesses, et cetera, that are on the city of Springfield sewer system. The sewer system needs to be upgraded before this development is given approval. Number two, the school system will need to be upgraded. Some of the schools are currently packed to the gills. This development would increase approximately 600 students, most likely elementary students. Currently, the school system is looking at rezoning the school system to help with overcrowding. There are approximately 2,400 residences currently in approved subdivisions. With the proposed development, we'd put approximately another 3,000 residents for a total of 5,500 residences. The traffic will exponentially increase in the neighborhoods that are joined WDBL Road, High Oaks Place, Law Road, South Main Street, and Watson Road, not to mention Highway 49. The access points, particularly onto 49, will quickly become a safety issue. Law Road already has a tremendous amount of traffic. I know because I travel it frequently. Stormwater issues are already bad because of the water coming from the old Borthick Farm ever since the land was cleared approximately in 2011, 2012, 13 timeframe. And that's what some, a lot of those pictures are. All this water eventually makes its way down the properties on Jim Gower Road, which recently has looked like a lake. Once the water eventually makes its way onto the properties on the Raymond Head Road and floods a few of those houses and road. Then it reaches our farm in Car Creek, which causes flooding and the sewer main on our property to overflow.
Thank you, Ms. Hiver. I just want to clarify, we want to give everyone ample opportunity to talk. You will be held to the two-minute time limit. Number four, Carly Ladisaw, New Chapel Road, Springfield. Mr. Robert Watts, Battle Creek Road, Springfield, Tennessee. Jeff Price, Pleasant Hill Drive, Springfield, Tennessee.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, so I'll speak quickly, given your holdness to it. My name's Jeff Price, and I've lived in Springfield for seven years. What I'm about to say is a very condensed summary of something I've sent out that's floating around a lot of places on social media. So I wish to express why Vesper Village, as proposed by Barge Consultants, should not go forward as proposed. 3,000 homes on farmland that can never be retrieved, you cannot claw it back. We would lose a piece of our rural character and never get back 7.2% of the total geographical area of Springfield. After leaving Nashville proper, my time home has increased by, on average, 10 minutes coming this way, which is why we moved here. We do not feel the issues of school funding, new school buildings, or infrastructure have been adequately addressed, especially since we're a county school system that cannot earmark properly the funds going to a Springfield school. We have voiced many grave concerns about the ability to keep up with infrastructure and demands of this development. Here's a few things that we're concerned about. The intersection of Memorial and Central is still in need of repair after several months. Hale and Cotton Road repair's been going on for at least four weeks, and if I'm not mistaken, the traffic light, or safety light at Memorial Boulevard, is still down. Whataburger sidewalk installation was needlessly prolonged. The city had to repair Moreland Drive twice after Whataburger opened. There's a constant water issue under Dunkin' Donuts and Autozone. The crosswalk light, as I mentioned, still knocked over. And the timing of traffic lights where I live is atrocious. And then we also have the timing of the lights at 10th Avenue and Industrial that, when people are getting off work, it is so awful that it's hilarious. So all of these things, also, is disingenuous for Vesper Village proponents to say this is for all people when the starting price is $450,000, and you're gentrifying the area and putting people out of their traditional homes they live in now. People can't afford that. That's very disingenuous. So I have a petition at change.org. Please sign it. If you're opposed, please listen to us. Don't let this be a cursory thing that you're doing.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Smithfield. I'm the Vice President of Accounting and Finance for Hale and Cotton. I'm speaking on behalf of my company, which has been operating on South Main since 1932. We're not opposed to growth. We've grown dramatically alongside Springfield over the many years, and we expect to grow as Springfield grows too. We have three specific areas of concern for a well-planned and well-executed growth under the Vesper Village plan, welcoming new people to Springfield while still meeting the needs of current residents and businesses. Obviously, traffic. That's one of the concerns you're going to hear over and over. Hale and Cotton operates, operations create significant traffic on South Main. We have over 50 employees coming in every weekday. We have frequent visits from global customers and a variety of suppliers from the region. We have 300 to 400 farmers that deliver to us constantly across September to February. Semi-trucks are picking up tobacco that we've put in boxes, and they're transferring it to our warehouses or sending them directly to customers. We ask that South Main be widened with especially a central turn lane from Central Avenue to Tom Austin. The suggested small turn lanes are not sufficient. We also ask for sidewalks, which are mentioned in the traffic plan, and those are necessary for safety. The current water is insufficient for many, for current operations. We tried to put in sprinklers in our warehouses a few years ago, and there was not sufficient water pressure. And also, we create smell. Locally, we love the smell of dark-fired tobacco.
Thank you, Mr. Smithfield.
But we know that not everybody does, and we want that direct, that taken into account.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Hooks, Lawrence Lane, Springfield, Tennessee.
Good evening. We moved here from Memphis in April 21 after retiring. With our two daughters and their families living in Nashville, we were looking for a nice rural area to settle in. Springfield fit the bill in its small-town setting and beautiful historic square, only a mile and a half from our home. I'm not opposed to change and to growth, but I think this is going way beyond what we are ready for. When I first saw the map of Vesper Village, the size and scope of it horrified me because I saw how close it was to our home and realized it would greatly impact our getting in and out of our neighborhood. We have to turn left onto Highway 41 off of New Chapel Road to get into Springfield, and the current traffic makes it hard to turn left now. I can't imagine how hard it will be if Vesper Village is approved. These were my first selfish thoughts on how it would impact my husband and me, as well as our neighbors. Then I looked at the plan with how it would impact Springfield, the town we've grown to love. In the presentation made last month, I didn't see any plans to widen Highway 49 or South Main Street. This would certainly overwhelm our traffic and roads and overall affect our schools, power grid, sewage, our wonderful town. What assurances do we have that it really will take 15 to 20 years to complete? Is this something to tell us to make it more palatable, that it really won't affect us that much because it's not an all-at-once project? I think it will. 3,000 homes plus businesses dropped into 500-plus acres. That would mean two to three times that many cars on the road with families that have one teenager, or 9,000 vehicles. It's incomprehensible, it's gargantuan, and it's my fervent hope and prayer that this proposal is voted out and moves on to another town that can better accommodate this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1.5, public hearing on plan of service for Vesper Village annexation. If you wish to speak, please line up in the middle aisle. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and your address. Please line up at this time.
My name is Patrice Yancey. I'm at 2201 South Main Street. If this were to go ahead, there are requests that I have. One is to maintain the current R-20 density that's along South Main Street, that would start at 21st and go down to, I guess, Law Road area. That is one to five houses per acre. And so I know the larger houses were planned to be in that area anyway, but to do that, to not make it more dense than what is already there. I know the other part will be added in at whatever density, but this is already in the city. And then to locate roads to have the least amount of impact on people who are currently there for whatever, as far as the entrance and exits into this village, to lessen it to the neighbors. Also, to build sufficiently wide roads within Vesper Village so that, as growth occurs over the years, which I'm sure that it will, that as those roads widen, that they would not impact and go into the current people's yards for easement or for the actual road itself. So to build those with enough green space to do that. Also, I know I've got friends in Pleasant View at that development, and they have built in the residential areas, they have one lane for parking, and then the two for traveling. People park on the other side, so they park on both sides of those roads, which essentially makes that a one-way, so people have to back down and out and into intersections to get out. So to not have that, to have parking on both sides if possible. And then, of course, also to install traffic lights at South Main and 22nd and South Main and Watson, and then we'd love sidewalks on either one side or both sides of the road. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Jason Repsher. I'm with Barge Design Solutions, Nashville. We obviously represent the developer. Yeah, and we're very happy to, you know, present Vesper Village for the county and the city. I understand the concerns that many may have on, you know, stormwater issues, traffic, water, sewer, but that's all been vetted by the city, you know, to this date, as far as the growth and the plan. The plan for this property with the conference and plan that was, you know, put forth by the city and was, went through similar processes to the public hearing process, designated this property for high-intensity use, for mixed use, this type of development in a controlled manner. And we're simply following that plan to provide the connector between Highway 49 and 431 and put the density where it belongs, where the infrastructure is already in place the city's been planning on for a number of years. So look forward. Any questions, you guys, as you move forward? And thank you again.
Hello. My name is Jim Moore, Springfield here, and I'm for this development. I'm for the growth. I'm for the rooftops to get us the businesses that we want here. Got two, two major concerns. One, one being, I've gotten a couple of phone calls recently from city staff asking me how my developments are going and am I moving forward and using the sewer capacity that that we've been guaranteed at Highlands Neighborhoods. So I'm sure that that's under repair, and maybe the new sewer plant's going to be open by the time Vesper Village would happen. But why, why is staff calling me if already approved and underway neighborhoods and asking me about my sewer capacity? Like, if you need the sewer capacity, then why are we annexing 500 acres into the city? Again, my understanding is that the sewer repairs are underway to enlarge the treatment facility. Just curious how that's going to work out. Second would be, just a quick impact fee comment. Again, I will talk to any of you all about any impact fees at any time. I would love to see a situation where impact fees apply in greater capacity to annexed properties. Right now, we are 200% above the next highest residential impact fee in the state, that being Franklin, Tennessee, probably quadruple our income. So we're punishing properties that have been paying city taxes for decades. So let's look at the annexation as an opportunity to make up, you know, an increased impact fee. So for the development, excited to see it. Just two thoughts I thought I would throw out there. Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Terrence Summers, 154 Doris Avenue, Robbins County Educator, Robbins County Commissioner, District 12. I know the, you know, the job you guys are dealt with here. I would never come and try to speak for or against, like, you know, that's your thing, but just hearing from the development, I know one thing that really has been hit home is maybe schools. And, you know, maybe you build a rumble in that, you know, Springfield has no middle school, you know? And I don't think, you know, seeing plans, I don't see any plans for a middle school. That may be my only concern here, is school for kids, because like I said, you got a lot of families that are probably young coming in. You know, where will these kids go to school? That'd be the only question I have, but, you know, you all have a job here on you, and I'll just ask you to know, think about, it's inevitable, it's 2025, Springfield, 30 minutes from Nashville. I totally get it, you know? In between Nashville and Kaufman, totally get it. Responsible growth. Only thing I would say, responsible growth, and I'll leave you at that. Thank you, Ms. Summers.
Just one more thing about the plan of services and the sewers and the storms. They're just not adequate right now. I think that the county, this big surrounding county is going to be, have, we're going to have to raise property taxes. The adequate facilities tax is from the county, is probably going to get raised again. And that's the only way that something like this can be afforded. We've got to build some schools. Is the city going to chip in some money to help build some of the schools that, because of the developments that they're approving and the people that's going to be having kids in the school system? We are having, the school system probably coming to us within the next two years or this year to have either additions or a new school to be built. And this is going to add on top of that. The county does not have the utilities payments that the city does. And all the residents of the county should be, should know about this, and I don't think this has been fully, fully transparent. I mean, I didn't find out about some of the meetings, and I, and I stay around all the time and on, on social media and stuff like that. This is just not a time, I'm not against growth. I'm for responsible, smart, planned growth, and us having the infrastructure to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would like to make one clarifying statement to what I said before. When I listed the issues at the intersection, the Whataburger street at Moreland Drive, the sidewalk repair that's ongoing that took so long, all these things, the city workers are extremely hardworking. I've seen them work. I live next door to one of them. So my statement was not intended toward them, but what it does express is a lack of confidence in Springfield as it exists now, with our infrastructure, with our organizational capacity, with our employment capacity for our utility staff and employees. If we cannot handle what we have now, can you understand us, Planning Commission, when we say there are grave concerns about adding 3,000 doors? 3,000 doors, times 2.5 on average, let's be realistic, three, 6,000 additional people. Take Kroger, however many unique customer visits they have in a day. Some people have bandied about that it might be Publix that moves in, in this location. I don't know how true that is. That's nothing official, but say it's Publix. We pull some of that traffic off. Other businesses. I would like to lovingly correct one of our speakers that said that two to three times the traffic, no, would actually be closer to 10 times the amount of traffic, because you have not only the individuals going in and out, you would have the traffic flow going in to support the businesses, you would have the business employees, you would have the owners. We're looking at gargantuan infrastructure challenges that are not being addressed, especially with South Main. Thank you for letting me clarify, and really, thank you for letting us speak, and please don't let this be procedural. Really listen to us. Thank you.
Jerry Southegill, 6097 Hoods Branch Road, been here since 2005. One concern and one suggestion. My concern would be, I haven't seen any information on how many private individual homes are being displaced and whether they'd be being fairly compensated and assisted in finding a new beginning. I'm thinking of elderly couple that might live in that area and have to start all over again, or how many lives are we impacting with this new development in that regard? My suggestion would be, I've been involved with the proposition for charter schools in this area, and from what I've learned, they're willing to come in and build a school and help you expand your school facilities at no cost to the town. And I would encourage, I would see if you could encourage the school board to take that into consideration as a way of relieving some of the growth and the pressure on the school systems.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Billy Riley. I live at 403 Fifth Avenue West, the hysterical district, really, now since we live there. The, I'm for this growth, really. As a farmer, we need to start putting people closer together that's willing to live close together. And this tax revenue will help also with the infrastructure that's coming in, that I understand, not only from the rooftops, but also with the commercials. So that's all I have to say there. I'm very for it, and I know y'all got a heck of a job in front of you.
This time, we'll close the public hearing. Item 2.1 under new business, discuss and possibly take action on an annexation, plan of service, preliminary master plan development, and zoning request for properties located between South Main, Law Road, and Highway 49 from AG2 to specific plan Vesper Village. So I have a motion.
Senator.
Mr. Durham.
Good evening, Commissioners. The first item on tonight's agenda is a request for Planning Commission recommendation of approval for annexation, acceptance of the accompanying plan of service, specific plan district zoning, and a preliminary master development plan. The application for annexation includes approximately 475 acres contiguous with Springfield city limits. Specifically, the area lies between Highway 49, South Main Street, and Law Road. This area is within the city's urban growth boundary. As part of the annexation request, a plan of service was developed to ensure that necessary city services extend to the area. Additionally, letters explaining the application were mailed to adjacent property owners and county representatives. Signage was posted on the property, and the public hearings were shared through local media sources. Concurrent with the annexation, the applicant has requested that the development area, approximately 512 acres, which is a combination of the approximate 475 acres included in the annexation request and approximately 37 acres that are currently within the Springfield city limits, be zoned specific plan Vesper Village. Specific plan zoning is a unique designation that allows flexible land use that is individually tailored to a site and remains tied to the land regardless of ownership. All development within a specific plan district adheres to the approved master development plan. This proposed specific plan is designed as a walkable, mixed-use community that prioritizes residential, commercial, and recreational spaces. Key features of this specific plan include a mix of residential types, a variety of commercial spaces, active and passive open spaces, and a multimodal transportation network that includes a boulevard connection between Highway 49 and Highway 431. Additionally, the plan includes sidewalks, bike lanes, walking trails, and an extension of the city's greenway into MLK Park. Developed in phases, the applicant anticipates the complete build-out of Vesper Village will take approximately 15 to 20 years. The submitted application aligns with the Springfield 2044 Comprehensive Plan for Growth that was developed with community stakeholder input. Given its consistency with Springfield's long-term growth strategy, staff recommends approval of the annexation, plan of service, specific plan zoning for Vesper Village, and the preliminary master development plan. To answer any questions, Jason Repsher, the developers representative, along with development, excuse me, along with department heads, are here this evening.
I'd like to recognize, Ms. Moreland.
Sorry, Moreland.
May I ask you to speak?
Okay. So I have a question for Jason.
Hold on just a second. We'd like to call Mr. Repsher to the microphone. While he's at the microphone, if anyone has any questions at this time for him, let's ask him while he's here, so we're not calling back and forth.
Okay. So bear with me, because I have a lot of questions.
No problem.
But as we can see, a lot of people feel very strongly about this, so I feel compelled to ask these questions. So first, I was here at the workshop that you created, that you had hosted and presented, and I have several questions about how your zones align with the phases that you're looking at, as far as when all of this will be built. So can you confirm that Phase 1, East and West, two portions of the development, do not include any residential units? And if so, what is the rationale for beginning your development with a purely commercial area? And which businesses are you targeting to occupy these areas?
Okay. Yeah, so those two zones, 1E, 1West, those two phases do allow a residential component to them. There would be a plan to have residential in those two areas when, you know, and the concept of 1E, 1West is to try to build that boulevard. We kind of talked about that in the workshop, is getting the boulevard built and getting that momentum so we can get the boulevard done within a, you know, reasonable period of time. You know, we've kind of said five years as far as that connection between there to get the boulevard completed, and that allows for that, that traffic flow to begin and stay on that spine, that new boulevard. So there is a mix of commercial and residential in both of those two initial phases.
Okay. So lots of questions about Law Road and that area, flooding and water issues. Can you talk to somebody who has not studied the engineering or knows anything about that other than, I'm driving through a road that has a lot of water?
Sure.
So can you provide more details on what a buffer zone on Law Road would look like? Because there is significant concern that we already have so much flooding and you're adding to it.
So I'll, I'll start with your last statement. So that's actually incorrect. So you are adding impervious area, so you're adding rooftops, asphalt shingles, you're adding asphalt. But at the same time, you're compensating by putting in stormwater controls, stormwater ponds, underground detention, that have that same amount of runoff, so the same water that fell on that farm today, and that raindrop, the time it takes for that raindrop to get to point A to point B somewhere on that site, will be the same. It's pre and post, that's what they will call it. The precondition has to be the same condition post-development. So as all the asphalt comes in, as the rooftop comes in, as the rest of the development happens, those stormwater controls are placed such that that same raindrop takes the same amount of time to-
So I'll, I'll start with your last statement. So that's actually incorrect. So you are adding impervious area, so you're adding rooftops, asphalt shingles, you're adding asphalt. But at the same time, you're compensating by putting in stormwater controls, stormwater ponds, underground detention, that have that same amount of runoff, so the same water that fell on that farm today, and that raindrop, the time it takes for that raindrop to get to point A to point B, somewhere on that site, will be the same. It's pre and post, that's what they will call it. The precondition has to be the same condition post-development. So as all the asphalt comes in, as the rooftop comes in, as the rest of the development happens, those stormwater controls are placed such that that same raindrop takes the same amount of time to get to the existing streams that are on the site.
Okay.
So, I'll keep going, so, yeah, to help. So in addition, this particular property has a sinkhole set that runs basically from the southwest corner to the northeast corner. It is, it goes up in elevation, so if you're on, you know, I believe, you know, some of their folks mentioned, you know, some of the other roads just off-site to the southwest. Currently, you know, currently that, you know, a week and a half ago had water sitting in it just like the water sitting at, you know, sitting at the YMCA. That sinkhole set, the lowest one that's on the southwest corner, is an elevation about 20 feet lower than the one on the north side of the set, up in the 5 North zone area. And so you basically have a, you know, tabletop where it's tight, slightly tipped. And so that water in that lower set, just like it did in 2010, you will see, you know, if you go to the aerial photographs, you'll see a very large pool of water sitting on the Baird property, just on the southeast, you know, and including the Edwards property, which is part of this development, during that flood event. A week and a half ago, there was still water sitting at the edge of that Edwards property, the one on the southwest corner, was still there.
Let me interrupt.
Yeah.
Is it okay for you to point?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm so bad with geography.
Yeah, that's why we're trying to switch it around, so that everybody can see. So, this is the Edwards property right here, this is, you know, when we're talking about this corner, this is, you know, not included in this, but the Baird property here, this is that section we're talking about right here. There's another sinkhole set right here that's in the middle of the property, and the upper one is just off, and also right there by the school. That lower one is at an elevation about 20 feet lower than the one in the upper end. So all the water naturally comes through that sinkhole set subsurfisally. The streams are all running to the one in the middle, and the water slowly and gradually goes out to the one in the lower end. That same amount of water coming from the majority of Springfield is still going to come there. Those streams are still going to be doing exactly what they've been doing for all of the infrastructure, all the homes that are already built all the way around the facility and the site. But the new infrastructure that we put in will all have stormwater controls outside of the stream buffer zones that will hold and retain that water, and slowly release it, so that the precondition is met, so that when you have all that asphalt and the water starts running off into that pond, it holds it long enough that it meshes up and is exactly the same, or better, than it was prior to the development. That is a requirement.
Okay, so if you don't mind me repeating this-
No, no, go ahead.
...so that they understand it. You're saying whatever additional stormwater in your development will then go through the new infrastructure you have, kind of as a holding place, to slowly filter into those other areas that already exist, so that they don't compound what is there right away?
Yeah, that is exactly correct, except for the very first part, we don't make new rainwater, so.
No, not make new, correction.
So it's the same amount of rain.
If I can interrupt you to clear up my question-
Yeah.
-because I didn't use the right words. Not make new rainwater, but because you're doing asphalt and concrete, and I know from science, my science classes, that the rain gets absorbed differently-
Right.
-on grass and on, on asphalt, so now it's not just soaking into the ground and it's having to-
Exactly. So that's when we're building those controls, to make the water sit in those controls, and either bio, you know, you can do bio-retention where it goes out through the bottom, or it's simply the traditional one that most people see, which is a pond that has a structure in it that allows the water to go out over time. Exactly, yeah, you've got it perfectly.
Okay, next question. Okay, so at your workshop, you mentioned that there are accessory dwelling units and cottage court design options, which I came to understand as optional, that as each zone is developed, the developer can choose to incorporate those, is that correct?
In certain zones, so it would only be, so the only, cottage courts, I believe, are only allowed in the red, in the, basically the D zone, so that, you know, the type D, because they're, they're set up for being with single-family type operations. They wouldn't be in like, so, you know, either one of the Es, they wouldn't be in B, but they could be in the D and C areas.
D and C areas, which would be part of Phase 4 and 5?
Correct, yes.
Right? Okay, so in your packet, I read that these are intended to be part of the strategy to provide low-cost housing options, and one of your key principles is to provide socioeconomic diversity and honor the history and culture of the area, correct?
Absolutely.
So with respect to that, I would like to know what that means for house, potential house pricing on these, because it was mentioned earlier that the prices are kind of sticker shock. I don't remember any prices mentioned during the workshop, we all had, I didn't have time to ask that question, so I would like to ask that now.
Yeah, I think that, that number probably, that number probably came from one of the open, open community meetings we had, we had two over a couple of years, and they asked what the median price of some of the single-family larger homes would be. The intent of this whole development is have a, a very diverse mix of products that are available to the community, from those cottages that would be smaller, up to, you know, larger homes that would be in that $450,000 range.
You told me you were starting that.
We don't answer questions, but I will, I will answer your question. So, again, I was asked specifically at a, at a, at a open house, what the single-family housing price would start at. And we said $450,000, because that's the average price of a 2,000, 2,500 square foot home of that size. However, we have a diverse, you know, a very diverse mix of products available here, from stacked flats, which would be kind of the condominium approach, to the cottages, there are a wide range of options for, you know, for the development to have in there to bring in different price points. And so those will, obviously, because they're square footages, will have a, a lower price. I don't know exactly what those are going for in, in Springfield right now. However, I know they're much less than $450,000, if you're talking about a 1,200, you know, 1,200 square foot, you know, cottage versus a 2,200 square foot, two-story home.
Okay, so are there any safeguards in place? Because again, a lot of the issues here are, we want to learn from neighboring communities, we want to learn from Nashville, we have a very special historical, cultural home here. And part of that, part of the worry of many people, including myself, is, you know, how do we take care of that without pushing people out? Your area of development around 5 North, which would be your Zone C and partially Zone D, which is Phase 4 and 5, again, is around that Bransford community.
Absolutely.
And I have taken the time to reach out and speak to people in the area and understand what some of their concerns are, which are mine, too. On paper, we're saying, yes, these designs are available, but what is the safeguard to ensure that not every person who chooses to develop each area decides, oh, I'm, I'm building a $350,000 home, I'm not building any of these $200,000 homes, or, or whatever else there is? I didn't know if that was within your protection or within your safeguard.
Well, really, the SP kind of helps you with that, because what, what the SP is doing is giving the vision of how the, that those, each one of those different areas are laid out, and it gives a guiding principle to how that area will look and feel. It's not the end. So this commission, along with BOMA, see the final product as well. So as the final piece, meaning when we get down to what you're traditionally seeing as like a PUD design, where you're seeing the individual houses laid out, you're seeing a hotel laid out, you're seeing, you know, a, a medical office building layout with stuff around it, that still comes back, and you still are looking at that as this, you know, commission to look again at what's being presented, and you still have the ultimate authority to say, we don't, that not meshing up with what we thought was going in each one of these areas. So, and those may come back in 10-acre bites, it may come back in 50-acre bites, but you will see that again as those final flats come through.
Okay, so again, just to get it on the record, these low-cost options here, accessory dwelling units and cottage courts, they are, they can be implemented, but they're not zoned necessarily to be, what I'm trying to say is, and again, you're going to correct me for using the different terminology, forgive me, because I'm not too used to this, but I'm just trying to understand what, what will give our people a voice, and what will give our people a chance to stay where they are, if there are no options for them price-wise in that area?
Yeah, I understand where you're going with this, so, so there, I can't give a guarantee, but I'll, I'll tack this a different way for you to give you a different piece to it. If I were to come and say, okay, we want to, we want to put a 75-foot frontage lot, single-family home, across this entire property, and we're going to get to 3,000 houses, I'm not sure I can do the math in my head, but we can't fit them all on 512 acres. It's just not possible, because your, the lot sizes would be too big. So you're going to get a, you know, a mix of product, because by the time you do open space, the stream buffers, you know, that whittles down to 350 acres or so, and so you are going to get a very diverse mix of product across this, from the development, because that's what's going to be able to go in there. And specifically to the 5 North area, that, that C block, whatever else, that has very much been tailored to be with all of the, all the restrictions within the SP that we put in, to be a community that mirrors Bransford. It has, you know, sized streets are fine, it's got, it's got the sidewalks, the streets are there, but it has the smaller home type, a smaller lot size to mirror what's going on there, to one, allow for, you know, a smaller product to go there, which, you know, per square foot prices would then dictate that that price would be lower, and allow for the stacked flats that were in that area, so that, you know, that is somebody that can, you know, if they can afford an initial home right off the bat, they could come in and do a stacked flat condo for 250 or so, get into a stacked flat, and then stay in that community and buy one of the smaller homes nearby, maybe move up to a larger home, and in the end, with, with the, with the, you know, nursing component and everything else, nursing home components, some of the other assisted living components, eventually move off at the end and stay in this community and go into, you know, go into, you know, an assisted or living type, you know, arrangement still on the property. So I think we've taken into account kind of the range of, you know, the generation of, you know, somebody coming to the site and staying there and, you know, live, working, and playing on this site for, you know, for their entire life, if that's what they choose to do.
Okay, all right, so there was another question at the workshop that I wanted to follow up on. It's my understanding that system development charges are something that the city is enforcing, it's a one-time fee for new developments to cover added service costs. You had mentioned a lot of economic impact numbers, I don't know if this was one of those that you had highlighted on, but from my understanding, this is something that is in place so that public concerns on potential strain on local roads, emergency services, and all of that, that whatever you're adding to the community, you're also paying into.
Mm-hmm.
Now, it was mentioned earlier that some of our fees are pretty high, even compared to the richest cities and counties within the greater Nashville area. Have you done any estimates on that for your development, to see if that's going to work and be, be attractive to your potential developers, or will it be cost prohibitive for them?
Okay, so there's five in there, so I'll try to get all five.
Sure, take your time.
Yes, an economic, an economic impact study has been, we just finished up, wrapped it up, we had those draft numbers at the workshop. Again, this is a $5.2 billion, you know, over, over first 20 years, impact to Roberts County and City of Springfield.
Okay, if you don't mind, sorry if I keep interrupting, but when you say impact to Springfield, what do you mean exactly?
That's jobs, taxes, revenue.
Okay. Now, as far as what I'm asking, though, about the system development charge, but sorry, did I interrupt you?
Yeah, I'll just keep going.
Please, keep going.
No problem. Yeah, so we're not asking for any release from the impact fees that you have?
I believe they're called system development charges, I was, it's my understanding they have to be legally referred to in them.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not going to ask for waivers from the system development charges, no.
But do you know, have you estimated what that would be for the development?
So, no, I don't, I don't have that, that specific number in, in hand. I do, what I can say is that in new tax revenue over the next 33 years, you know, in 20 years, it'll be $33.5 million, just to, just to the city alone.
So $33.5 million, she said?
Yes.
And so that would be on property taxes on this-
Property taxes and others.
-new properties, and does that include any sales tax-
It does.
-from commercial?
It does, yeah, and hotel.
All right, so you said you, was that it? I know I did ask a lot.
No, so, yeah.
So thank you for your-
No, you're fine, you have, you had a couple other questions. So as, you know, you, you know, as we go forward, you know, and continue to move through with, you know, with, we will end up having, you know, different items come in, so a hotel versus the same beds at an assisted living facility, a hotel has a higher tax revenue, so we're doing estimates for that model. So if you ended up doing two hotels versus, you know, you know, and, and one assisted living facility versus three hotels, that will affect that model. Right now, we're, we're plugging, you know, based on the way we have it in the model, is two hotels and one assisted living. So it will change based on, you know, time, based on what physically comes into those commercial spaces, but the residential, the number of units, is not changing, as we've indicated before, that maximum number is the maximum number, and-
And that is 3,300?
And that includes single-family and multifamily combined, so that is, that is a running number, so we, you know, we're not, you know, they will not, you know, the SP basically locks that in along with the commercial space. And so when using those and the anticipated, you know, items that would come into the development, that's, that's how you generate those economic models to see what's going on. And it addresses, you know, I know schools and other things came into play, but again, you know, you've got, you know, you've got X amount of, you know, those same property taxes are going to Roberts County, they're dedicated to go to the county school system. So, you know, when you're looking at that 32.8% that is automatically dedicated to go to the county for schools, then that also drives, you know, that also ends up having a $31.2 million impact to the county for schools alone.
I'm sorry, you, you lost me there, where did you get the percentage and the dollar amount from?
The percentage is, is what you have codified, you know, in what, in what Roberts County is taking from property taxes by, by, by law.
So you're saying, but you're saying that, that assumes by the time all of those are in place, then that would be the amount?
It does, it does over that, but it's, it's, that model runs that over the 20-year period, so it knows that it takes 20 years for all of that to come into play, and then that continued tax base continues past that 20 years, we just ran the model to the 20-year period.
So you're telling me cumulatively, within the 20 years, is the 5.2 billion?
Yes.
Okay.
And it continues on from there.
Okay.
You continue to have, you know, you're still going to be, you're still going to be getting taxes from those properties, you're still going to be getting, you know, revenue from the hotels, it just continues on, we just stopped the model at 20 years. That's just the 20-year impact-
Okay.
-which is a large number over 20 years, it's great, it's a great win for the, for the city and the county.
So at the time of the workshop, somebody had asked, when do we expect the first homes and commercial properties filled or occupied? Is that still two to three years out from the beginning of the project? Would that still be the case?
Yes, I mean, it will take a couple of years to get the boulevard built, and then while that's getting, you know, those initial phases to build boulevard on any side, and then, you know, at, once that has started, then you can start pulling, pulling building permits, and then the home, you know, those, and in those cases, it'll probably be multifamily, would be pulling permits to be, and then they have to build. So it's going to take, before that first, you know, kind of, you know, ramp up happens, is at least two years, you know.
Okay, so what would you, I, again, bear with me, stop me if I'm asking too many, I'm just trying to really understand this. Because yes, schools, schools are a problem, school, that's not for you to fix, I'm not saying that because I'm not asking you to fix it, but I'm trying to picture here, in that first phase, with the residential properties that are in there, what are we seeing, like, are we expecting 3,000 people in there within those first two years, right? What is that?
Yeah, so again, the entire, the SP is, is basically setting a framework for the total number of residential units and a total amount of commercial, that's going to go in the entire development. 1E and 1West have not been fleshed out. They are not here for you to say, here's exactly that we're going to put a brand-new blankety-blank in on this corner, and here's what its square footage is, and here's the 200 units that, of multifamily that might go in behind it. None of that has worked out whatsoever. The framework for the entire development is there for, that's the maximum that's out there.
Okay.
I would say, in my opinion, doing this for a while, in my opinion, in 1E and 1West, you're probably looking at somewhere around 200 to 250 residential units, that are going to take about three to four years to get, you know, built and completed and put bodies in them. At which time, the boulevard would also be in getting completed, and so all that traffic and everything else is going to be flowing on the boulevard. So by the time there's actual real momentum and real activity occurring in 1E and 1West, and stuff getting built, the boulevard is now- One West, and stuff getting built, the Boulevard is now complete.
Okay. And again, this is taking it with, nothing is set in stone as far as that number you gave, and I, and I understand that, and I appreciate you taking the time to explain that more to me. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe I'm done with my questions.
Any other questions while Mr. Rapture's at the mic? Mr. Gray?
I'm not satisfied on the South Main Street. The Boulevard being there, we're creatures of habit. We've been traveling South Main, north and south. It's not all going to jump on that Boulevard. So, how are you going to fix that?
So, with the, with the traffic model, the new development, and new traffic's coming. I think somebody, there was mention that somehow, you know, the new Boulevard makes, you know, traffic completely go away. We're bringing new people in, there's going to be traffic on that Boulevard. South Main, as it looks right now, is not overloaded. I know people may have different opinions, but as it shows in the traffic models, the traffic counts, South Main is not overloaded and can accept additional traffic. However, with the Boulevard in place, first, for the main grouping, it's going to provide a pathway for anybody coming from, you know, on, you know, coming, you know, north on 49 to make a right-hand turn onto the Boulevard, and come through the development to get over to the commercial section over on 431. It's just going to be a natural path. I mean, I'm not sure exactly at, you know, I know creatures of habit, but when I'm, when I see a brand-new giant traffic light with a nice big turn lane on it to go into this nice new, you know, this nice new development, to go past a couple of new commercial items that I might want to go to, I'm probably not going to drive further past that to go to Central, then drive down Central, then then turn right, and come down South Main to get to the same Walmart, when I could have simply got on the Boulevard, seen a couple of new sites, figured out what new, new restaurants they just put in, and then, and then made it over to the Walmart. So, I think in that regard, you know, we're basically taking the traffic from, basically the southwest section of Roberts County is now going to come through the Boulevard when, when it's completed. Now, as far as Central and, you know, and West Main, that natural pathway for folks that live on the north side of, you know, Central, Central Springfield, north side of Springfield, I don't disagree. They, that, you know, if you've been going, you know, down South Main all this time, you're probably going to continue to go down South Main. But, that same traffic model shows that, you know, West Main in its current form, you know, you know, South Main in its current form is able to handle the capacity that Springfield has right now, and will continue to. And when we have the Boulevard in as the buffer to take the additional traffic out of the equation, plus what's inside the development, it does not increase the need for anything to happen on South Main Street.
So, at Watson Road, the entrance to Vesper Village, you got a right out, you got a left in. It's two-lane now. Are we talking about it's going to end up being four-lane through a certain section?
Yes.
And how far north and how far south are we talking?
Gotcha. So, right at Watson, you know, and, and South Main, so if you're on, if you're, you know, if you're on Watson, you just drove up and you, you're getting, you're getting to South Main and about to turn right, there'll be a new right-hand turn lane there. There'll be a, the current, you know, I stop and I don't have anywhere to go because there's a house in front of me, that will now be the straight across and go into the development. And there will be a left-hand turn lane there as well. So, that will widen, that section right there will widen out. On the other side, the other direction, you will have the continuation pathway to get to the Chick-fil-A. As you go into the development, there, there is, you know, that will be, you know, look very much like Batson, you know, Batson Boulevard down there, where you've got a full, true median in the center, and you'll have two drive lanes on, on each side. And so, that'll be the path, the pathway. And if you were coming down South Main and trying to turn into Vesper Village, there'll be a new right-hand turn lane there. And that'll be a very wide entrance on the other side, because if you were exiting Vesper Village to get out into South Main to go north or south, there'll be a new right-hand, there'll be a right-hand turn lane out, there'll be a straight to go across to go to the Chick-fil-A or to the Walmart, and you'll have, you'll have a left-hand turn lane to go north on South Main.
Approximately, how long are we talking about as far as distance?
So, those, those, those turn areas and, and those merge-in lanes are about 200 feet, about 200 feet long. So, you'll go, so there are four, so in this case, at, at the end of Watson, on the other side on the Vesper, so there's, there's four, there's four residences on that side, one that's, that's, you know, part of this, you know, annexation and redevelopment. The other, the other, two more up will, will be slightly impacted. This actually stays inside the existing right-of-way, but those will have the right-hand turn lane eat into that right-of-way. The fourth one would not, as far as, you know, so if you've driven that a lot, as far as spacing, that'll kind of give you like the length. But that right-hand turn lane over there. The, the now unused assisted living facility, they have a, they have a extra entrance that's literally five feet from, you know, the stop sign at Watson. That will have to be relocated if it's, we're not, we're still working with C on whether or not that's actually an illegal exit that they've had for years. But that will get, if it has to, we're going to relocate that up to their second entrance, which is 300 feet up, and then that will allow that right-hand turn lane. So, we won't have, we won't have that traffic if that, if that facility ever gets up and running again, have that traffic come back out into that right-hand turn lane.
Ms. Moreland?
Yes, okay. So, you mentioned a bunch of things when you answered that question that, that confuses me a little bit, so if you could help me understand that better. You mentioned a new traffic light, and having a new traffic light will kind of be that, that reminder, telling people, hey, turn here, use this, right? When is that traffic light actually going to happen?
So, the traffic lights at the, at the end of, you know, so at, at West, you're right there at Watson and, and, and South Main, and at Highway 49, both go in day one with the Boulevard. That's day one. Full light, full width of all those turn lanes all go in day one.
So, phase one, or during the, when the Boulevard is complete?
No, phase one. So, they are both at the entrance, so you, they have to go in right at the beginning. So, you know, they will go in as soon as the Boulevard construction starts, construction on those approaches, getting all the electricity in to put the lights in, getting poles in, all that will happen, all at that, at, at the very...
So, at both ends?
At both ends, yes, correct.
Okay. All right. So, then you mentioned something about in the annexation and widening those roads, that there was a, some homes that are going to be affected, did I understand that?
Not affected, that's, you know, so, yeah, so there's...
...current, and let's go back to the property executive. So, this is the one that's already included, so this, you know, this is, this one's included in the annexation. There are three additional homes that are sitting right here, you know, two are rentals, one is own.
Okay.
The right-of-way in these two, which I don't know if it's hard for everybody to see, but the right-of-way in this little section here that extends in, we're going to use that available right-of-way to make a right, you know, to make a right-hand turn lane on, on South Main into the development.
Okay. So, what does that mean exactly for those homes there? Are they going to be, are they, how are they going to get in and out? And forgive me, this is a stupid question, but I'm just trying to figure out, if I live there, and they're fixing a road in front of me, and it is part of my property, but it is the right-of-way, are my children going to be able to play out in front? How's the bus going to bring them, drop them off? These are just, I'm just trying to understand from a practical standpoint.
Yeah, so during construction, you know, for, you know, especially for those, there will be, there will be, you know, signaling, you know, there'll be folks that, you know, if the lanes need to be, you know, shut down, there'll be signaling folks there. But again, this is, this is a simple right-hand, this is a simple right-hand turn. So, we're simply grading off the top six inches to a foot of topsoil and soil, putting gravel down and paving. It's, it's literally about a three-week operation.
Okay. So, the traffic study, I know we don't have the time to go through a 30-plus document about your traffic study, although I know it was provided to us.
It's actually 690 pages long, but yeah, I just, I had a 30-page summary with me.
Well, whatever was provided to us was only 30 pages.
Yeah, the summary, yeah.
But if you'd like to share the 690-page one?
I hope not.
I'd be happy to read it when I'm trying to put my kids to sleep, because I can't see.
It definitely is, you want to do traffic counts, yeah, it's, it's not fun.
So, I guess what I'm trying to understand here, again, from a practical standpoint, I'm a mother who uses that road. And many times, I'm stuck behind a school bus, or trying to get my kids to the doctor, which is conveniently the easiest way for me to get to their doctor is on South Main. Okay? I know there was another gentleman here who talked about the traffic from their business, which I didn't even know was happening, but that's because I'm not there during the times when those things happen. So, what I'm trying to understand is with, when the 690-page document, as you said, was developed, how does it actually incorporate our practical situation, like when parents are taking them to school, when these businesses are having heavy traffic times?
Well, so, it's done in stages, so, we do the traffic counts at those heavy peak-load times, in addition to low-peak times, so that we can get a full count of not just, you know, the 10 o'clock hour when everybody's off the road, but those are taken into account during peak time for folks driving in, you know, to go into Nashville, or to go into town, or drop their kids off to school, but also when they're coming home. So, there's a range of timeframes in there in which all of the traffic counts were done in order to account for all those. It's a T-dot standard that we're following, to basically make sure we capture all of those. It also was done in a timeframe that just happened to coincide with, you know, Cotton Hales', you know, busier timeframe, so their truck traffic was captured, you know, for coming in there with, whether it be their semis or anything else that were trying to turn and taking up, you know, you know, both turn lanes trying to come in and make it across, you know, the South Main. All that was taken account, account in that study.
So, you mentioned T-dot. I don't really know how T-dot works. So, you're saying off of South Main, this little city road that we have, that T-dot has cameras there?
No, no, we actually, yeah, so...
Grooves, what?
No, no, exactly, no. We have, we actually have real people that sit in a truck and count every single car going by in both directions and at each intersection. So, they pick the, you know, they pick those busy intersections. Every one of the intersections that we have in that traffic study, somebody sat in a truck and made a count of everything that was going in every direction, you know, during those peak times and during off times.
Okay. And in what timeframe was that done?
They do it over, they do it, they do it at a three-peak interval, so they do it over three times, and they do, they did it over basically a month, month period, over about a month is what this one took.
So, was it done during the summer, when there's nobody going to school, or was it done in the middle?
No, it was during, no, it was during, it was done during school hours in order to pick up the traffic. So, that's why we know the traffic flow going into, into the Bransford, you know, early start program and everything else, is it was, it was, you know, it was done during, you know, school time. I'm, I will have to go back and look at when this one, but I believe it was, you know, started in August and ended in, in, in September and October.
Okay. So, all of those particulars would be in the references or the appendices?
Yeah.
That we can look at?
You could, yeah, the entire study was given, you know, it wasn't just the, it wasn't just the partial, but the entire study was given to, to the city to look through.
Okay.
Mr. Bev?
Jason, this isn't a question for you, but for the city administration. Questions and comments regarding South Main, which is suspect at best in certain places, especially when you try to turn on 22nd Avenue to go to Lowe's, if you're coming from that side of town, it's one of the worst hills there is in, in, inside the city, I think. Especially with the flow of traffic coming from the south to the north. Is there any long-range plan regarding South Main and taking care of, because it's got some pretty deep ditches on either side of it? So, it's, it is a questionable two-lane street at best, and with the development of this type, it's going to get even worse. And, you know, the Helen Cotton issue is, no, it's, it's a legitimate issue. But is there anything that the city has in the long-range plan of upgrading or getting grants to do something with South Main?
I'd like to call Mr. Martin to the microphone.
So, the short answer to that is no, right? And, and that's something that we have, when, starting a couple of years ago, we started working on plans. We didn't have a comprehensive growth plan, we didn't have a parks plan, we didn't have a plan for really just about anything, and we have a lot of plans now. The short answer with South Main is we have evaluated sidewalks, because South Main is in desperate need of sidewalks to finish. You know, it ends right there after, well, 20, yeah, right there, 20th, 22nd, 21st, somewhere around there. And sidewalks need to be finished out all the way, at least to the park. The development that went in across from the park, we required them to put in sidewalks, because the plan eventually is to finish that. Now, the Greenway was designed to be that, okay? The final phase of the Greenway that ends currently at Bransford was, was kind of tentatively scheduled to come back to South Main, come all the way down what would be the west side of the street, and end at MLK Park. All right? Now, that, of course, changes with this development, because this development proposes to take it a shorter distance and take the Greenway from Bransford and pick that up and carry that to MLK. I'm going to answer another question, and by answering your question. Ms. Moreland, I do, we do, we have run a preliminary estimate on the impact fees that would be generated by this development. It's about 30, $32 million. The non-utility, I mean, excuse me, the transportation impact fee alone from the residential side is enough to put sidewalks in on South Main. The problem is it'd be the most expensive sidewalks that the city's ever put in because of those ditches, because it is a very, very old, narrower right-of-way. As far as expanding, you're talking about having to purchase additional right-of-way and purchase houses and that sort of thing, and that's not something that, at least, since I've been here, before I got here, that the city has ever looked at, that I'm aware of.
I think it would behoove the city to look at, at least taking it back to 22nd, because that is a shorter distance where 22nd comes in, because that is a, a major cut-through. It's probably, it's got as much traffic on it as Watson does, more than likely.
Yeah, I agree, 100%.
So, as part of this development, if this development is to fly, I would love to see the city do something that would take in consideration maximizing the potential for doing something on South Main.
I agree. South Main's in desperate need of, of, of a lot of things. Now, like, I mean, like it's been mentioned, I mean, the, we lowered the speed limit recently to 30 miles per hour, and that has, we did that because of there's, there's more folks out there than there used to be. There's a new townhome development that's down, it was 30 during the heavily residential area, and if it's going to continue that way, lowered the speed limit. It's, it's a, it's, it is a struggle to control that speed, because we do have capacity on South Main, and so people do speed, and they go too fast, and I'm not advocating for more traffic, because one of my major things that I always say is I don't want to become Murfreesboro and, you know, have the traffic that, that Murfreesboro has or parks for anybody else. But sidewalks are, are a place to start, but widening would be certainly something that South Main needs in particular areas, 100%.
Mr. Shaw? Have you already been in contact with T-dot for your entrance on 49?
We have, we're having one of our final meetings tomorrow, actually, to, you know, work, you know, work the rest of that out. You know, their biggest concern was making sure that that was a right-hand turn coming out, going north back into downtown, was at a right angle as opposed to following WDDL that has that kind of, you know, 45-degree angle, and that we're, already had planned on doing that, and...
So, that, straightening that back up is a part of this as well?
Yeah, so, it, that will straighten back up, and it will be, it'll be a traditional right angle when you get up there, it'll look like most every other, you know, intersection you come to.
When we left the workshop last time, you were having a conversation with Bransford Youth?
We did, and also, you know, and I'm going to make sure I get it right, the community center was, you know, the folks with the community center were also there, Sports Alliance were also there. It was very, it was, it was a great meeting to understand what their needs are, and how we might be able to help and, and work together on those as we continue to move forward.
And finally, one of the citizens had made a comment, hadn't thought about. Have any elderly or anybody been displaced because of the properties that were involved here?
So, the, no. So, the, the one, the one home on Watson has not been lived in in 15 years. She had already moved out a long time ago, and they had not figured out what to do with the home, and, and then unfortunately, Ms. Edwards, in the middle of all this, passed away. And so there is no one being displaced. The two, the two homes in question, no one was living in at the time that we purchased them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Moreland?
Okay, my questions are for Jason. With regard to the TDOT conversation on Highway 49, does that have anything to do with the stoplight as well? Because that is a state road, right?
Yes, it does, yeah. And it's all to work out all the different particulars, whether or not they want it 162 feet long or 158 feet long on the, on the, on the left-hand turn lane into the development.
So they are ready to let you put that stoplight in day one?
Yes.
Okay. Now, since Ryan had mentioned earlier, those fees amount to about $32 billion.
Million.
Thirty. Did I say million?
About six. Hold on one second, we need to make a couple of calculations.
Everybody still awake? I was missing you, sorry. Okay, $32 million. Is your development prepared for that? Are you factoring that in now? Do you think that's going to deter people from developing, since it's that much?
No, it will not.
I'm good.
I'm concerned about the intersection at 22nd and Main. And I noticed in the traffic study, you know, there's some off-site improvements, so there's a turn lane, I think it's central and Main. There's other improvements that are identified that, that aren't part of the property there. And I see you're very close to 22nd and Main. You know, what was the thinking of, of not making improvements there? And it may be a discussion that's happened with staff as this has evolved. But that's very clearly an existing safety issue today, and so I think adding more traffic through, through there to the site just kind of exacerbates that problem. And I understand it's tight, there's homes that are right there. What, what solutions were explored in looking at that?
Yeah, so we're, we're actually not coming out at, at 22nd. So that was an initial option, and the reason it did not go any further is that the, the angles of those roads in there would require right-of-way acquisition from the landowner that is right across from the end of 22nd, and they were unwilling to sell or have right-of-way, even the 15 feet we were talking about for about 30 feet of their property in the very front corner, to alleviate that and then widen that whole area out. They just are opposed to it. So we actually have the connection all the way down at Sleepy Hollow, so it actually, you know, so our connection out on South, the one and only connection besides the Boulevard, comes out down on Sleepy Hollow, where we have, you know, wide enough areas to, you know, have track, you know, basically have vision, you know, so you have traffic to distance, you can see what's going on as you're coming, kind of coasting down that hill. And that's where we have the, the entrance, you know, the one and only entrance on South Main that's not Boulevard.
Okay, so keeping on, on Main Street, because you've got property that's on Main Street, are you all providing sidewalks along Main Street?
Yeah, we're willing, you know, any of that property that we, that we have control of, you know, that we're happy to allow for an additional right-of-way to put, you know, to put stuff in. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then can you just briefly talk, because it's Sub District D, so how that addresses Main Street? Is it envisioned that the development kind of begins to turn internally, or will you have maybe units that have access on Main Street?
So, yeah, so the, the whole concept here was to try to not put and dump traffic straight out. I mean, would love, you know, there's developers out there who'd love to have, you know, one of those little pockets right there on South Main, say, I wanna, I wanna put some single-family homes right on there, I wanna put my traffic right on on South Main. But the whole concept for the Boulevard, and the timing and the way we've set this up with those initial two entrances, is to make sure the Boulevard is completely built, and that spine is in place before we start moving out into the single-family residential. And that way, we're forcing all, you know, that traffic back into the site. Their patterning from, you know, initially where they start off is that they're gonna want to come into the development and get out on, onto the new Boulevard, which is gonna be a lot easier to go through one light at South Main, across, you know, straight across, continue out on the Watson, and get on 431 and go over whichever direction they want to, as opposed to trying to go out on South Main. So the entire development, phasing approach that we have is all built around the spine road, getting it in, and then building off of that to alleviate traffic issues for, for the neighboring community.
You may not be able to answer this one now, and it's kind of beginning to tweak your sub-districts. Are you able to repeat kind of a similar, a character on Main Street, so there, there's some kind of homes that are through there already? Where it wouldn't necessarily be like internal-facing, but it may access internally, but it kind of repeats that character? Is that something that you all have explored?
Yeah, so there's, so there's, yeah, so there's, there's three homes, so there's three homes, so the one right at the, right, you know, right at that northwest, you know, north, I would call it that northeast corner. That actually, you know, is kind of, you know, kind of tucked in, it's a lot tucked in between two streams, and I'll point, because... This is what I'm talking about, this, this little white box right there in this corner. Wrapped around that, that's what we're looking at, basically a community garden for the Bransford community. We have several barns up there, I know a couple of them disrepair, but we can, you know, get that word. That's, that's a great location to kind of tuck into the Bransford community, have a community garden that's associated with that little corner. That home is gonna be pretty much isolated, and just like it is now, you know, so its character and intent is gonna look exactly. The next, you know, the next two down, or that, or that section right where, where unfortunately 22nd comes in, there's those two homes that sit, you know, that sit right in there. You know, we're not, we're not touching those, they're up on a little mole, and, you know, and on the other side, our property starts, we're gonna have some landscape buffer between us and them, and then, you know, they'll, you know, they'll have the backyards of some single-family residences that are in those areas. But we're not, we're not trying to mesh that same, you know, that same architecture. Those are more craftsman-style homes, it'd be a little hard for, you know, to mesh that in with the rest of the character of the development. But they're also not gonna really be a, you know, they're not, they're not gonna stand out, because they are kind of a tuck-in piece right there on, on South Main.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Rappert? Why is that the mic?
Not a question, but maybe a, a comment. I think everybody here in Springfield, we, we want to see Springfield grow, but we, we will not take our time with it. And the project looks good on paper, but the project of this size just makes me kind of nervous about, it's like I can't get my arms around it, it's like moving too fast.
Well, so, yeah, in that regard, I mean, again, this, this is a 15-to-20-year project. This is not gonna happen, you know, this doesn't hap, this doesn't happen overnight. I would be more nervous without it if I came in and said, well, this property's gonna get developed, it's already showing for high, you know, for high-density development like this to push stuff in, if this was not as a cohesive plan like this with the SP, and you had just individual, you know, individual builders just came and said, okay, I'm gonna go buy that perfect little, you know, right there where, where this lower D is, this little section right here is, you know, this little section right here is, you know, super perfect, I can shove, you know, I can shove four homes an acre on that with turns untoed, let me shove four homes an acre in there, and boom, I'm done. And then I go, and the next guy does it on the next one, it's about the same size, and they don't look anything like the first one, and, you know, they're, you know, they're completely off the wall, and the roads don't mesh, there's no sidewalks coming together. And then they go to the next one, and the next one, and all of a sudden you have a sea of independent little communities that don't relate to each other, don't have sidewalks, don't have connectivity, and you just have traffic dumping out in every direction because you've not planned for it. I'd be more worried about that than this, you know, this collection, this SP that basically says, look, we've got a road network that's going to work, we've got collector streets built into this, we've got a mixed-use community so that we can basically attain, you know, you know, having a coffee shop, and a drugstore, and a vet, and a doctor's office, and a medical office building, and everything else that everybody wants in, you know, in close proximity that they can walk to, restaurants that they can walk to, as opposed to a hodgepodge of different things that never look and, and feel cohesive.
It's something about, I was born and raised here, there's something about the hometown feel, you know, we want it to grow, but we don't want to lose like the Springfield that some of us can remember from when we was growing up.
Yeah, and we're copies of that, I mean, that's, that's why we've put like, you know, that, that, that open space in, in that, you know, in the kind of that core area, to have a gathering space, to allow everybody to come and gather, and have different activities there, so that it kind of still has that same feel. You know, community gardens, you know, the, the amount of green space we're baking into this to make sure that, you know, there, you know, there's not just house upon house upon house just stacked in there. You know, we're allowing for that green space to be there, and putting the houses where they belong, versus just, you know, slamming it all together and saying, here we go.
It looks good on paper, but I'm still having trouble getting my arms around it, but I'm getting on.
Well, again, so this is, this, this is this stage, but again, as each individual on these pockets and stages, it's gonna come back here. So you're gonna see, as this continues and goes, it comes, each one of the final ones come back to the same, you're gonna see this thing grow, and you're gonna be voting on it as each one of these comes to, you know, as we go through the process.
All right. I'm gonna start at the end and go all the way around, ask any one of you have a final question for Mr. Rappert, why is that the mic? Mr. Townsend?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Moreland?
You know I'm gonna have a question. Okay, so, again, just, I know this is further out there, but to me, driving down those roads, I'm thinking this is tomorrow, and I know it's not tomorrow, I understand that. But help me picture, if this goes through and you're doing, you know, moving along with Phase One, in my head, I'm seeing dump trucks, cranes, everything on South Main, and 49, when I'm trying to take my children to school, or my husband's trying to drive out of town to go to work. So what does that actually look like?
Well, first off, we don't have anything more than 63 feet tall, so no, 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 no cranes, no, no major cranes involved, so you're, you're good there. Yes, there'll be, there will be construction activity that will be coming in, but it will be coming in off Watson, so it's gonna come in 431 and come in Watson, or 49 and come in the Boulevard section. Everything's gonna be focused on those new sections that we're bringing in, winding out. Everything from the beginning starts with that Boulevard and that new road, so that we're bringing that traffic to where it can be handled, and then brought into the community that way. So initially, those construction entrances, if that's what you wanna call it, are gonna be in the two Es, those two first phases, and then everything's gonna come off, off, off those, off that road as we move forward.
So what does that do for 49?
So on 49, we'll, we'll have, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the exact traffic counts are gonna be, but we will have traffic coming into the site, construction workers initially coming into the site, and then you will have, you know, build-out as you start going through. But again, that light right there, as it is today, does not even need a right-hand turn signal on it until 2036, and that's when half, over half the community's already built out.
Mr. Bev? Mr. Baggett?
Make sure no one has any questions for staff while we're at this place.
I do.
You have a question for staff? Who would you like to address?
Ryan?
Mr. Martin, if you'd come to the mic, please.
I was just trying to understand the system development charges. Do those take into effect when, according to each phase, or do they, does that all come in at once?
Sorry, I wasn't trying to escape the question, I was going to get my...
No, no, you're fine.
My iPad. So the, the estimate of 32 includes utility and nonutility, okay? And I think Mr. Moore, well, Aubrey's still here. Our, our system development fees are extremely high. I mean, they are. It's a, the city of Springfield was sort of late to the party to adopt system development fees, whereas cities like White House and, and, you know, I think Mr. Moore mentioned Franklin, theirs are pretty high. Those cities did that a long time ago, right? And so the study that the city conducted, this might be a little bit more information you wanted, but the study the city conducted had a very, very, very high maximum number, and it was based on expected growth and infrastructure that needed to be taken care of. What, what are system development, development fees for? They're for infrastructure and growth-related expenditures, not replacement. So the city's building a new wastewater treatment plant, not because of growth. Now, we're building it larger than the one we have now, because we, we do have growth, and since we're building it, we're building it because our current plant is 40 years old. TDEC, the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, has put stricter permit limits for discharge on wastewater discharge, and our old plant will not be able to meet those limits. And so we're building a new plant, because our plant is end of life and it can't meet the permit limits. But, so what can we use, and I use this as an example of what you can use system development fees for versus what you can't, okay? Our current plant is 3.4 million gallons per day, okay? We're currently using about 2.7 of that, so we have quite a bit of sewer capacity left at the plant. The new plant that we have designed, that is actually out to bid right now, is 7 million gallons per day, okay? So that's enough growth, and I've lived here all my life, too, and that's, that's enough growth. I mean, I, I won't see that 7 million gallon, even with this development or otherwise, if you all approve this or, or not. I won't see that 7 million gallons per day being eaten up. What can we use system development fees for? The 3.6 that didn't already exist. Does that make sense? 7 million gallons per day, we already had 3.4, we can use basically system development fees for half of that price, half of that, half of whatever the price it is to build a plant. So I wanted to establish that foundation, so we know what system development fees do and what they don't do, right? So that estimate that I gave you is an estimate that Mr. Brewer had put together, preliminary. Now, that's preliminary, we don't know exactly what it will be, and I can guarantee you one thing, it won't be $32 million, exactly, right? It'll be 33, or it'll be 31 and change, or it'll be what, it'll be depending on how things shape up. Those, but those fees, the estimate that I gave you is after the build-out. So that's total build-out, which was your original question. That's the $32 million, and that includes both utility and nonutility. Now, the complicated part of that is system development fees are broken up into category. So I mentioned earlier when I answered your question that the transportation fee would be enough to pay for sidewalks, plenty more enough in, in $20, $25 to pay for sidewalks to finish out on South Main. Certainly, if, if, if the developer, if you all approve this, and the developer put sidewalks on their South Main frontage, that would help tremendously, because that's just less, that, that the city has to do, to do the sidewalks. But it's broken up into categories, there's a transportation fee, there's a parks fee, there's a police fee, there's a fire fee, there's a general government buildings fee, and I think that's it for nonutility. And then on the utility side, there is only a water impact, or system, excuse me, I almost did it, I almost messed up, a water system development fee and a wastewater system development fee. The reason that we are high, and as high as we are, is because of our wastewater issues. Our wastewater issues date back to system neglect over the course of about 35 years that had to get rectified under a 2020, 2012 EPA order. All of that's long since happened, it's, that's finished. That was 13 years ago that the city started doing that under an EPA order. People ask all the time, why are our wastewater rates so high? That's why, because the city had to spend $63 million, which was pure debt, on the EPA order on consent to fix all the neglect issues for 30 years. Now, we have brand-new pipes in the ground, that's, that's the positive part, so we don't have many issues. Now, what's gotta be addressed now is the treatment plant, because it was built in '84, I believe, and so it's 40 years old, and, or over 40 years old and needs to be replaced. The impact, the system development fees, rather, were born out of the question being raised, why are my sewer rates so high, what can we do about it? Right? Because the state of Tennessee doesn't allow us to take sales tax money or property tax money and apply that towards wastewater. The state of Tennessee doesn't allow us to take sales tax money or property tax money and apply that towards water infrastructure. The state of Tennessee says that all utilities have to be independent businesses. The state of Tennessee doesn't allow us to take water rates and apply that to our wastewater infrastructure, wastewater system, if water happens to have a good year, right? Or, or is a healthy fund at the time. So the only way we can pay for those sewer upgrades is through sewer rates. Except for now, we have system development fees. And so that's the alternative, that helps pay for growth-related expenditures, and that's all.
What about tap fees?
We, we no longer have, we no longer have capacity fees, we do have tap fees.
Right.
And that pays for the installation of the tap.
But that's also got wiggle room, right?
It does, yeah. The Board of Mayor and Aldermen establishes by ordinance all, all fees and charges of the city.
I mean, developments like this could generate a lot in tap fees.
Absolutely.
And that can go toward building the new system.
Correct, yes, sir.
Any further questions for the city manager? Mr. Perry?
So for everyone, just so we're all on the same page, can you just quickly walk through the process, so from the submittal today, and the planning commission, to Board of Mayor and Alderman, but then they come back for final development plans, I think, on each section. So do you mind just kind of walking through what that process looks like if they get approval with Board of Mayor and Alderman?
Sure, so, and I'll, and I'll be part of it, and I'd, I'd actually refer to, to Ms. Durham for, for kind of the mechanics of it, because she's the department, that's her, that's her discipline, and, but I can, from, from this level, I can tell you that the planning commission, what the planning commission you all are charged with tonight is to make a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for annexation and zoning slash rezoning of this property. You all make a recommendation either for the Board of Mayor and Alderman to approve or not to approve the application for annexation and rezoning. So your recommendation tonight, the Board of Mayor and Alderman meets on the third Tuesday of this month, and will take up your recommendation for or against annexation or rezoning. They do not, they're not obligated to go with your recommendation. If you recommend that it is annexed, they don't, they can decide not to. But the planning commission is designed to be the ones that really vet the, the nuts and bolts, the meat and potatoes of, of developments before they get to the Board of Mayor and Alderman But the planning commission is designed to be the ones that really vet the nuts and bolts, the meat and potatoes of developments before they get to the Board of Mayor and Alderman level. So it takes two readings. And so the annexation and rezoning, if it fails at the March meeting, then it's done. If it gets approved at the first reading in March, it goes to the Board of Mayor and Alderman again in April for a second and final reading. So it does take two readings. There will be other opportunities for the public to speak at those meetings as well. And so as far as the internal mechanics of the preliminary master development plan and the final master development plan, that's contained in our SP zoning ordinance, the ordinance that you all approved. And Ms. Durham will oversee that. And so if the chair would allow, I would turn it over to Ms. Durham for her to explain that process to you.
Ms. Durham?
Okay, what Ryan was saying is essentially where it starts. Once it gets approved by the Board of Mayor and Alderman, assuming it gets approved on their second reading, the owner developer, their representative is immediately eligible to turn around and submit a final master development plan. Probably won't look a whole lot different than this. That final master, well, once they get approval on their preliminary master development plan, which is what we're asking for as part of our request tonight, once that is approved, then they have a certain amount of time that they have per state law that they have to kind of start moving forward with the process. So they can, once it's approved by the Board of Mayor and Alderman, turn around, immediately submit for their final master development plan. That, we have to go through department review just like any other plan. Once that gets approved, then they're free just like any other applicant for land development. They still have to go through approval process. They'll have site plans, they'll have subdivision plans if it's all single-family residential. All of the department heads will look at those plans, they'll submit engineering documents, they'll submit hydrology reports. All of the things that would go into a typical, you know, 10 acres, five acres, even one acre, whatever it might be. Those same processes would apply as they come through with each phase of development or each, within each phase, each aspect of the development within each phase. Is there any other questions?
Well, just one quick one. So planning commission, it goes back preliminary, final.
Yes, the site plans would come back to you, the subdivision plaits would come back to you. You guys will definitely see this. As Jason mentioned, it'll, you'll keep seeing it. Each phase will come back for review.
And then things like sidewalks where it may have come up tonight, but it maybe is not 100% clear, like on Main, it's required. Those are things we can have discussions.
Those are absolutely things you can add, yes. But whatever is in that SP document that they have submitted, that all of you have a copy of, that is the final zoning. That is what you will see there when it's done.
Ms. Moreland?
Okay, so just to clarify, preliminary, we give our recommendation, goes to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. If that gets approved, they're going to start a final. The final is the whole zoning for the whole project in every phase.
It is not the little details that you'll see as each aspect of the smaller components come before you.
So that will be when you go through a site plan and all that stuff?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Any further questions for Ms. Durham while she's at the microphone? This time I'll call for a vote.
Do we do a motion?
Have a motion.
You may motion. Ms. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, to recommend to the city council approval. And I do that for, this is the type of things that the planning commission has to look at. Not all the time, but this is the type of things that we requested that we would get to look at because of this specific plan. That specific plan was brought to us to talk about what we would love to see the city grow toward in the future. This is unlike anything that we've ever seen here, but if you travel around middle Tennessee, you're going to see it. And they're nice developments. And everybody talks about wanting to put Springfield on the map. I think this is a great opportunity to help Springfield step up the game when it comes to the type of development. Now, we're not engineers. We rely upon city staff to tell us whether or not there's adequate water, whether there's going to be adequate sewer, whether there's going to be adequate other utilities, whether it be electric, gas, or fiber, whoever's going to do that. It's up to them to tell us that it's there. We've got a ton of documents on this agenda that says that's what each one of the department heads has come back and said. It will support the development, this type of development. So as a planning commission, that's what our job is to do. So as a motion, a motion that we accepted and presented as a preliminary for the preliminary plat, the annexation, and the plan of service.
Do you have a second?
I'll second. I'd like to make a comment as well, if I can. Because I do want to recognize there's a lot of people here, there's concerns. And that we're being really deliberate. There's been a lot of really great questions. We have a lot of information in front of us that we've read through 60 pages on the traffic impact study. There's another 600 that probably has all the numbers and everything, you know, we could think about. I kind of look at this as a role of the planning commission of not only looking at Springfield, but how we fit into the county and the city or to the region in middle Tennessee. And so looking at this type of development where you have the potential to just easily come in and do five-acre lots, there's no review. Or one-acre lots in a lot of instances with the existing zoning. I would much rather have something that's very deliberate, that's had two very extensive workshops where input has helped shape it. There's a lot of controls that are in it by sub-district as to what this could look like. And so I think in the long run, we think about development throughout the county, the kind of hot scotches. Does some big, large lot homes that are really frankly hard for a lot of people to afford. I think we will appreciate something like this that has a lot of different options. There's probably going to be different price ranges with it. There's some commercial, you'll be able to walk, it's connected and close to the existing city. And so I think this is heading in a good direction compared to other types of development that we could potentially see or that's just already done by right.
Thank you. For a vote.
Okay. Briggs?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bibb?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Moreland?
Yes.
Passes with eight.
Item 2.2, discuss and possibly take action on a request to abandon a portion of the right-of-way located at the end of New Hope Lane between XL Real Estate properties.
Ms. Durham?
The request you have before you is to abandon a 40-foot-wide portion of right-of-way, approximately 46 hundredths of an acre at the east end of New Hope Lane.
Hold on just a second. We'll let them exit.
Yeah. This abandonment was actually approved by the planning commission and went through two readings at the Board of Mayor and Alderman. I don't know the exact date, approximately five years ago, so is what I've been told. Unfortunately, it did not have a third and final reading by the Board and Mayor, by the Board of Mayor and Alderman. There are no changes to what was originally approved. And so because it was already approved and because there are no changes, staff recommends approval of this right-of-way abandonment.
Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or questions on this item? Do we have a motion to approve? Call rule.
Who was the second? Moreland?
Yes.
Bibb?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Passes with eight.
Item 2.4, discuss and possibly take action on a resolution modernizing various provisions of the Springfield subdivision regulations.
2.3.
2.3. Yeah, item 2.3, I'm sorry. Discuss and possibly take action on ordinance modernizing various provisions and amending a portion of the Springfield zoning ordinance.
Ms. Durham?
Okay, there is a lot of words there to ask you for just two things. With this request, we are asking for an approval of a re-codification and reformatting of the zoning ordinance. And we are asking that you approve an amendment to the temporary real estate signage requirements that have been found to be somewhat restrictive. Regarding the re-codification and reformatting of the zoning ordinance, the ordinance, excuse me, the ordinance has not been codified in many years. And the reformatting will create a more user-friendly document. So that is the purpose behind doing that. The temporary real estate signage, we are asking that residential areas, the signage area, the maximum sign allowable is going to go from four to eight square feet. And then the commercial areas would increase from eight to 16 square feet. This request puts the signage more consistent with what's in surrounding communities.
Is that like a for-rent sign?
Four square feet. So currently, right now, if you-
What type of signage are we talking about? Is this like for residential, I mean, house for sale?
Yes.
Sale by owner?
Yep.
For rent?
Those kind of signs, yes. The signs you would see if a property was being sold. It came to our attention from a citizen that our signage was quite small compared to most jurisdictions. And so we're just trying to be more in line with what is in surrounding communities.
Motion to approve. Second. Ready for a vote?
Okay. All right, Shaw?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Bibb?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Moreland?
Yes.
Passes with eight.
Now we'll try item 2.4, discuss and possibly take action on a resolution modernizing various provisions of the Springfield subdivision regulations.
Ms. Durham?
Okay, this one is somewhat similar to what was just done. With this request, we're asking for the commission to approve the codification of the subdivision regulations. These regulations have never been codified. This codified version has no content changes. Rather, it's just simply a reformatting that provides a more user-friendly document.
Motion to approve.
Who was my second?
Mr. Baggett?
Greg?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bibb?
Yes.
Moreland?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Passes with eight.
We have item 3.0, other in old business, we have none. We have a motion to adjourn.
So move.